Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order this regular commission meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, November the 19th. And welcome all of you to Government Center. We're delighted that you're here. We will begin our meeting, as is our custom and practice, with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Let me call on Pastor Roy Wesley to come forward to the podium now and ask our two scouts if they would come stand behind him. At the conclusion of his invocation, they'll lead us into Pledge of Allegiance. So would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come now to thank you for this another day that you have kept us through. Thank you for providing for our every need and protecting us from all hurt, harm, and danger. Now, Lord, we come on behalf of business for the city of Macon-Bibb, and we pray, oh God, for your blessing upon this meeting. We asking our Lord to lead, guide, and direct us into all truth. We pray that we will be, have a meeting of not only our body, but our mind and our spirit. We pray, Lord, that everything that's done in this service, in this meeting, will be done to your glory and for the benefit of the people. And so we ask you, Lord God, that you would bless the mayor, all commissioners, all city officials, and anyone who partake of and take part in this meeting. We pray, Lord, that you would guide and direct us now. And then, Lord, we pray that at the end of the meeting, that we will still be in unity and harmony and at peace one with another. Pray that you would give us a safe passage home as we leave this place by giving us, Lord, your traveling grace. Now, Lord, we pray you would have your way. Bless us and keep us now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Can I please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Our invocation tonight was given by Pastor Roy Wesley from the New Zion Baptist Church. Pastor Wesley married Marjorie Flowers Wesley. They have two sons, who have given them two daughters and four grandchildren. They moved to Macon in August 2006, and he became, and became the pastor and leading lady of the New Zion Baptist Church. He's active in the association, serves as treasurer of the Congress of Christian Education. It's the pastor's desire to lead the people of God into deeper understanding of the will of God. So Pastor, thank you very much for what you're doing here in your church and in our community and for being here with us tonight. We appreciate it. Our pledge of allegiance was led by two scouts, Brent King. Brent, would you please stand? Brent is a fifth grader at Veterans Elementary, nine troop, 109, and on his way to Eagle Scout. He has his Arrow of Light badge, working on his first merit badge. He's an A student, the eldest of four, loves scouting and doing community service where needed. Brent writes songs and sings. Brent also has a yellow belt in taekwondo. He's received a certificate from the Bibb County School District Superintendent for Technology. And Brent comes back to recite the pledge after battling issues with juvenile diabetes. So thank you very much for being here with us. And he's accompanied by William Burris. William, will you stand and be recognized, sir? He's a third grader at Veterans Elementary School. He's in the gifted program for the third year. William is the only boy in his family, has four sisters. Woo, man, that's a tough road to hold, eh, man? Good gracious, alive. He loves scouting, and he's a great helper around the house, and now he's a bear cub. William also has a yellow belt in taekwondo. It teaches him discipline. You know, in this day and age, it's great to see two healthy, wholesome young people, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Appreciate, good luck in scouting and in school. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Yes, sir. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Commissioner Bibb?
I just want to ask Brent if he writes in his country music.
Very, very, very good. Very good. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have circulated the minutes of our pre-commission meeting of November the 5th and our regular commission meeting of November the 5th. Are there any changes or corrections or additions that need to be made? If not, can I get a motion by Schlesinger, second by when, to approve the minutes as they were written and issued? All in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes of those two meetings are approved. There are no invited guests, but we're delighted that each and every one of you are here and glad you're here. You're always welcome. And the next item on our agenda are public comments on agenda items, and we had one person to sign up, and that was former Mayor Jack Ellis, who is here with us tonight, and he wants to talk about item 9B and 9I. Mayor Ellis, welcome, sir. Please come to the podium. You'll recognize for five minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, rather, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, and like to wish you all, pre, happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays in case I don't see you again. And I would say to William, he left, you said he had five sisters, four sisters. I have eight sisters, so that, that was, yeah, it's quite a challenge. But, Mr. Mayor, I stand here this evening to speak on a couple of topics. Both are near and dear to me, but one more so. And I don't want to get too emotional with it, but if I do, please excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I'm the fourth generation of Macon Knights. My great-grandmother Judy was brought to Macon in 1850 as a 14-year-old slave girl, sold from Virginia. Sold into the ownership of a man by the name of John Ellis, hence the name Ellis. Not that any Ellis blood is in my vein, but only by ownership that that name is attached to me. She gave birth to seven children. The last one was born in 1868, my grandfather. Six were born into slavery, so she had a lot of children as a young woman. My point is, we grew up in a system of segregation, degradation. You grew up in that same system. We inherited, we didn't create it, we inherited here. I've heard you say, Mr. Mayor, that, I heard you say at your inauguration, I was there in my last day of office, I think it was 15, 16 December, 27, 2007, you said that one of your biggest regrets was not being involved in the civil rights movement in Macon, and you apologized for that. You said, "I sat on the sidelines, I stood on the sidelines," wherever you were, but you admitted that. Well, I didn't sit on the sidelines, nor did I stand on the sidelines. I was out in the streets. Matter of fact, I was arrested right in this building, put in that jail down there, sent to the stockade, trying to integrate buses and trying to get a cup of coffee or hot chocolate at the Crystal. I left Macon in 63. We were still sitting on the back of the bus, just recently integrated them. My point, Mr. Mayor, is that we have, we lived that until 1964, the year that my graduating class, 1964, I turned 18. That was the year of the Civil Rights Movement, of the Civil Rights Act, eliminating segregation all over the country, especially in the South. 1965, the Voting Rights Act was passed, giving African-Americans throughout the South the right to vote. I was in Europe at that time, a young paratrooper stationed outside of Paris. Even though that young slave woman, Judy, gave birth to my grandfather, who gave, served my father, her great-grandson was able to stand in this building, or sit in this building for eight years as a mayor, the first and only black mayor to do so. It was never lost on me, the eight years that I ascended those steps out there, that this building was built by slaves, unquestionably. My point is, when I was mayor, we designated a place across the street named Rosa Parks Square in honor of Ms. Parks because of what she did to take the yoke of segregation and save our country, basically. So she is the mother of the civil rights movement, as far as we are concerned. And that park was designated for her to be a place of reverence. I've commended Commissioner Lucas for making sure that the money is going forth. I understand it's on the agenda tonight. Please vote for it. But one thing, I'm a Vietnam veteran like you, Mr. Mayor. I spent 21 years in the Army. I was wounded in Vietnam as a CIB, Purple Heart, and all that. So I have nothing against veterans. That is no place, number one, for a veteran. We had a veterans' memorial. We dedicated one with the behest of our commissioner at that time, Councilman DeFour, in front of the city auditorium, I mean, Centreplex. So I say that. Let this place, Mr. Mayor, get it funded. Let it be something very special to a woman that, that was very special to our country, a woman that basically saved our country from itself by taking a stance when no one else would. Now, that's my question on that. The other one is the public-private partnership that you're going to vote. I have nothing against public-private partnerships. I'm a big proponent of public-private partnerships. Matter of fact, I did a big one with the Marriott. We put $14 million of public money in there. The other people were 25, so I'm for that. What I encourage you to do, and all of you, that when we give money to people who are going to build housing, we have a severe housing shortage in this town, that we at least make sure they set aside some units in there for affordable houses, workforce housing, not just build money, build houses that no one can afford. So that's my, those are the two things that I speak on this evening. I thank you very much. I hope I didn't exceed my time, but if I did, please excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I know you're only last year. Let me wish you well as you sprint to the finish over the next year. I know last year, you're trying to get so many things done. I know how that goes. But one thing I would encourage you to get done is please, the Rosa Parks Square, if we can get that fully funded and operationed the way it was meant to be, a place of reverence for the mother of the civil rights movement, Mother Rosa Parks. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Ellis. Appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Nobody else signed up to speak on an agenda item, so that'll carry us into the next item of our agenda, which are reports from our standing committees. And the first of those was Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The committee met on November 12, 2019, and took the following actions. The committee approved a resolution amending the Title VI and Title VII compliance policy plans, an amendment to the management agreement with Global Spectrum, and appropriation to the Central Cities Commons for improvements to the Central Cities Commons projects, and appropriations of up to $75,000 for LED lighting and resurfacing of the John Drew Tennis Center, a contract with Signature Tennis Courts for the resurfacing and repair at John Drew Tennis Center, and Tappan Square Tennis Center in the amount of $202,000, and an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting in the amount of $110, $220 for installation of the lights at John Drew Tennis Center and the Musco Lighting Contract. We approved the 23rd Amendment to the Splash Project Timeline. We approved a contract with Surface Masters for resurfacing of Bloomfield-Gilliat Recreation Center parking lot in the amount of $159,000. And we approved an MOU with Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency for the application and profile records in the Georgia EM Grants Pro System. This concludes the operations and finance report.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. There's no, no report from Economic and Community Development, as I understand it, no report from Public Safety, so that takes us to the Facilities and Engineering Committee, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Allen. Vice Chairman Allen?
Mr. Mayor, Facilities and Engineering Committee met November 12, 2019, and took the following action: to accept certain registered roads for public use as part of the county road system, to execute a memorandum of understanding with the land bank authority for acquisition of property related to the light rehabilitation projects used in 2018 splash funds, an agreement with Ingram and Associates for furtherance of certain improvements to Persley Street. This completes the report for Facilities and Engineering, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Allen. That takes us to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is applications for alcohol licenses. There are three of them for consideration tonight. Each one of them is accompanied by all of the requisite documentation, which is a certification by the sheriff of a satisfactory background check of the applicant, a statement from Planning and Zoning Commission that the zoning compliance is accurate and met, a distance measurement form from the county engineer to say that all the required distance separation, separation distances are there, the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph to advise of the application, as well as a certification from the Business License Division that the appropriate fees have been tendered for the beverages that sought to be sold. So the first of these three license applications is for Bloomfield Grocery LLC, doing business as Bloomfield Grocery located at 4175 Bloomfield Road. This is a change of ownership and not a new location. It is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The next application is by Pina Panona Avenue LLC, doing business as Reliance Food Mart, located at 3609 Panona Avenue. I believe it to be a new location from my review of the information, but it's also for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. And third, and finally, is an application by Mercer Mart Incorporated, doing business as Tom's Mart, located at 4381 Mercer University Drive. It is also a change of ownership and not a new location, but it's for beer package sales to go at that location. The committee of the whole recommends approval of these three licenses. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of those three licenses signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, those three licenses will be issued as requested. That takes us then into old business. And the first item of old business is a resolution to get us a pay study, and it was amended to call for an RFP for organizations to provide that information. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission requesting the issuance of a request for proposals in order to retain the services of an entity to conduct a study of salaries, benefits, and job classifications for Macon-Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Wynn, I've got your light on.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I know I'm beating a dead horse with this, but I keep saying that I hate to see us spend another $150,000 on a pay scale study that we had done at the time of consolidation. The city paid for it then, $150,000. We didn't do anything with it, albeit now the $150,000 is coming from law enforcement, from the Sheriff's Department, it's not coming from the city. I still think that we're pushing this back again. You're having the RFP that's going to take 30 days. We're pushing it back, and I still think that old study should have been something we used and dusted off and tried to see where we could fit into where we are now. I realize people are probably going to vote for this because the money's not coming from the city, but I still think it's something that we ought to consider that not to do, not to let the sheriff spend some of his money that he can use elsewhere and go back to this old study we had. I don't know why we keep doing things, and if we're not going to go ahead and implement this study and know that we have the money to do it, why are we going to do it again?
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Commissioner Watkins, I've got your light on.
Yeah, on this issue, I agree with Commissioner Wynn's assessment. We know that we underpay our sheriff's deputies. I don't understand why we need to pay an extra $150,000 to determine that we underpay our folks by $10,000. You can open up a Channel 13 article, a Macon Telegraph article, and it tells you exactly. We have a copy of the pay scale from several communities next to us, Athens, Clark, and several other places readily available. We have a fully capable human resource office, and mine's ourself. I'd say I think this is something we can get done. If we want to pay our officers more, we made the decision to move them up on the pay scale. So, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. And Mr. Allen, I've got your light on next, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you know, when I asked for Athens Clark to send their report to Macon, I really, I mean, I have not seen one commissioner even look at it, be brought out for us to look at, or anybody, I've not heard of anybody else looking at it. We just know we got it. And I feel like that, and like I said before, I will vote to do this. My gut tells me not to, but I don't think we're doing the right thing. I think basically, we need to have our staff look at what Athens Clark did to start with, and let's find out what we're dealing with. But I was down with what they said, what y'all did prior to me coming down here with that other one. Before, we pay another $170,000, $50,000, $160,000, that's a lot of money. So I just, I really wish we would, we'd back up. I mean, back up and just hold for a little bit, and, you know, we give them $1,000 for all employees. This isn't just for the law enforcement, it's for every employee we got in Bibb County. And I would really wish that, that we would go back and, us all as commissioners, you as the mayor, we have administration. Let's all sit back, look at it, and see exactly if we're doing the right thing by hiring somebody else when we've already got, the RC has done one, and Athens Clark did it. I mean, that's, I'm just, I just don't, I'm not happy with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Wynn, you got additional comments you want to make at this point?
With your gut, Commissioner Allen. If you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it. And I agree with everything you said. We all know employees need a pay raise. We all know our police officers need a pay raise. Commissioner Watkins said that. It's obvious, we know that. Let's just take this, if I, I'm sorry, I haven't read that study from Athens Clark, and I'll do that, okay? If that will help us get through this without having to hire somebody and just move on, let's do it. We know we need to do it. But if we're going to, if y'all are going to vote for this, you better be ready to pay for the, the results that come from this.
Commissioner Jones, I've got your light on, I believe.
Yes, sir. I have mixed emotions about it. Originally, I was against it because we've already spent the money. I'm not sure where the study is, Commissioner Allen. I don't know who has it. I'd love to see it, but I don't know who has the study. Janice has the study? Okay.
I can send it to you.
You can send it to me. Anyway, I have mixed emotions about it. The sheriff is for it because he wants to get the ball rolling. I'm all in favor of a pay increase. The more important question to me is, where's the money coming from? How are we going to fund this critical pay increase that I feel like we must have, especially for public safety, because we're behind competing surrounding counties as far as the Sheriff's Department goes? And the Fire Department, I asked Chief Riggins to get me competitive, or get me competing cities and counties, which he may have to go outside the realm, like Augusta, Savannah, Columbus, that sort of thing, because Monroe County has volunteer and some, some full-time as far as the fire goes, law enforcement there, there full-time, and their pay scale is higher than ours, and they have less, less stress, less, less risk in their job just because we're a larger municipality. So I'm not sure how I'm going to vote. I guess I'm going to decide in a couple of seconds here, but I'm not, I'm not, I think, I think it would serve us well to look at the other study. Yes, we do have 300 less employees, and that would have an impact, but I don't, I don't know what the other study says, so I'm kind of at a disadvantage.
Well, let me take the privilege of the chair just to say, I hope we'll approve this tonight. I do think it would get us started on the right foot. And a lot has changed. When the Middle Georgia Regional Commission provided us with the pay scale back five years ago, it, it accomplished a lot because we put everybody on the pay scale, and that took some adjustments to do that, but we got everybody on the pay scale. We have not had enough money in the ensuing five years to move people on the pay scale except by kind of special resolution. We didn't, but not a comprehensive way. Now we're 300 fewer people. A lot of job descriptions have changed, and I think we need to know how similar situated communities are paying their people. We don't want to be ahead of the pack, we don't want to be behind the pack, but we want to be right in it. And I don't think that we have the capacity in-house to do justice to this, and I think it would be money well spent and hopefully give us a solid basis on which to implement changes to the pay scale and give, give our employees the raises that they need and deserve. So I, I hope we'll, we'll pass this. Commissioner Allen, I've got your light on again, sir.
May, I make a motion. We table this until we get further knowledge from this board.
A motion to table is non-debatable, so although those wishing to table this signify by holding up a hand so that I can count hands if you want to table, table this. We've got one, two, three, four to table. Those opposed to table it? One, two, three, so there's seven, and Commissioner Tillman is out of the room and not able to vote. So you didn't get four, you didn't get five votes to table it, so therefore, the motion to table fails. So we're back to discussion. Is there further discussion about this? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote then. All in favor of passing the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. I think I've got three, so let me see what I've got. If you're in favor of the resolution, please hold up your hand. Let me count the ayes to yes for the resolution. One, two, three. Those opposed, those opposed to it. One, two, three, four. So you got four opposed, but the ayes didn't get it. They didn't get the three. So three to four, that fails, so it's in limbo. So there you are. Didn't, it didn't, it didn't pass, but it didn't get tabled either. So I guess it got, I guess it got tabled de facto by just by what happened, yeah, just this, this, because it didn't, it didn't get defeated is what I'm trying to say. You're right. We're moving on. Item, item B.
You authorize every one of the commissioners and give each one of them, including myself, a copy of Athens Clark County as well as the staff?
You don't need my authorization to do that.
No, I wouldn't. I just would like to have the people.
As a commissioner, all you need to do is ask the clerk. Good gracious alive. You know, holy micro, y'all. Come on, come on, let's, let's have order and move on.
I will, let's go.
Good gracious. Let's have order and move on. As a commissioner, all you got to do is ask the clerk for it. All right. The next is the Rosa Parks Square and the funding for it, asking the Urban Development Authority to see if they can float bonds and what that would look like. So I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to express support for the plan of the Urban Development Authority to obtain county-backed financing in the amount of $900,000 for the purpose of constructing improvements to Rosa Parks Square and to apply the proceeds from the sale of the Willie Hill Annex Building towards the repayment of said financing and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This comes from a financial perspective on this issue, from the first issue we just didn't vote on. I don't understand what the $900,000 is going to be spent for. It says for the purpose of constructing improvements to Rosa Parks Square. What are those improvements that are going to cost almost a million dollars? I've had people email me, call me, come up to me on the street and say, "Please don't spend almost a million dollars on improving this wonderful little park in front of the government center." What they want the money to be spent for are things like salary increases. By the way, we're going to be paying about almost $2 million for this $1,000 per employee one-time pay thing. It's not a bonus. This, this money would pay for, well, of course, it's not coming from us, but it's going to be things like this that we keep spending money on. We don't have, we don't have it laid out to what it's going to be spent on. I can't vote for something. We don't have, we don't have it laid out to what it's gonna be spent on. I, I can't vote for something for nine hundred thousand dollars, almost a million dollars, and not know what we're voting for. And then when you look at the other things that we could spend money on, you know, salaries, things like blight removal in our community, things that affect the community as a whole, not just one small park. And I know that this is going to be a county-backed financing, in other words, we're backing the bonds that are gonna be issued, but I don't think that we need to do this right now. I think that we need to look at where we're, where we're spending our money and time going forward right now, because we're gonna be spending a lot of big money next year if we do get a pay scale setting, we have to raise salaries, and also we have some pension fund things we gotta look at. So I'm talking about money here, folks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Uh, next, I've, I've got Commissioner Jones.
Yes, sir, I, you know, I'm all for improving Rosa Parks Square. I don't know about, to the tune of nine hundred thousand dollars, or really, it's, the talk has been about three to four million dollars, and we just don't have that kind of money to do that. Uh, it's, it's a great focal point, named after a great lady, beautiful spirit, Presidential Medal winner of honor, Congressional Medal of Honor winner, Rosa Parks. A wonderful lady, and it's named in her memory, and, and it's a great focal point. I, we do need to spend some money there, but I don't know about the proceeds of Willie Hill going to it in nine hundred thousand dollars. It's hard for me to imagine nine hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements to Rosa Parks Square.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Lucas, got you next.
Thank you. Um, you know, it's not so much what you say, it's what you do. You may say a lot of great things that might sound good, make you feel good, but it's your actions that, uh, let us know exactly where you are. We've had extensive discussion. There is a Rosa Parks, a Friends of Rosa Parks Committee that's been set up. Commissioner Tillman introduced the legislation, and we, I think unanimously approved that legislation, and then we recently voted to approve the members to serve. Diverse group of folks to serve on that commission. The actual amount, the nine hundred thousand dollars, comes from the million dollars that was pledged to us over the next twenty years. I believe this contract was negotiated by Mayor Rickert, if, if I'm not mistaken, for us to receive a million dollars from the sale of the Willie Hill Annex over a twenty-year period. And it was the Urban Development Authority that approached us about a way of funding the upgrades and renovations and improvements to Rosa Parks Square, because they were frustrated with being given that task of upgrading it, but not having the money to do it. There was a fund that had about sixty thousand dollars in it, and they spent that for work on some plans for the renovations of, of Rosa Parks Square. And then someone who serves on the Urban Development Authority called me and suggested a way of making some movement since we voted, uh, some time ago to approve joint renovations of the Poplar Street Park as well as Rosa Parks Square. So we have voted and committed resources, county resources, to upgrading not just Poplar Street, which has been finished a long time, but also Rosa Parks Square. Now, the plans are beautiful plans, and if you have not seen them, I think Janice, our clerk, can get those two years, where they're readily available, and also available through Alex Morrison at the Urban Development Authority. Beautiful plans that include a statue, a, sort of a, um, seating area, also a water feature, um, a number of tribute, um, tributes to the military, just any number of things, but beautiful, um, presentation. However, they fully realized that it would take three, I think the estimates are three to four million dollars to complete that, um, uh, plan, and they know that was not available. So they came to us with a suggestion. This resolution simply expresses a thank you and go right ahead and work this plan with the resources that you have. What they would do is to borrow the money, and it would be paid back over time from the proceeds that this company that's purchasing the Willie Hill building will be paying into the Urban Development Authority, or into Macon-Bibb. They felt like it was only right to do it this way, and it offered a solution to us. We were not able to fulfill our commitment, and then they were able to follow through on their commitment to upgrade Rosa Parks Square. I think it is a, a, uh, an ideal way of accomplishing this. It will help to form the centerpiece of this area down here with the new hotels and the other things that are taking place. So I would just encourage us to go ahead and approve this, and thank the Urban Development Authority for coming up with a plan such as this. All this resolution does is say, it says to Urban Development, go ahead, proceed with your plans, and thank you for helping us to, uh, upgrade Rosa Parks Square. So, uh, sorry, it took that long, but there needed to be an explanation of how we got here, and how reasonable a plan this is. So I urge your favorable vote on this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Uh, Commissioner Vivins, I've got your light on next, sir.
Right about the end of the discussion on Rosa Parks Square, we had a discussion on Poplar Street. I don't remember what it cost, but I, I don't remember objections to us spending that money on Poplar Street. And I think Rosa Parks is something that we really need to go ahead and do, because we had a lot of discussion about it, and, uh, we need to work that out.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivins. Uh, Commissioner Watkins, got your light on next, sir?
I'm always amazed as to like what things cost when it comes to government projects like this. The numbers are always astounding. I, I, again, I tend to agree with Commissioner Wynn that it is amazing that a park project could end up being a multimillion-dollar project. But very commonly, we've seen and we've been at this table enough where they are. Moving dirt and leveling land for whatever reason is quite expensive a function for our government. If I'm understanding correct, HGR, a architectural company, provided us with, you know, site-ready construction plans that included, to me, I thought to be some somewhat outlandish ideas. A waterfall was included, and some very nice statues. And I think the committee, over the time, has been value-adding that down to you went from more than two million, million dollars worth of project to now it seems that the community and the committee is happy with, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars working with the money that they have scenario. And I think y'all will find a clever way to, to make the money, um, from the sale of another, another building close by. So I, I, it seems to be the will of the community, we've already done our site work and value-added engineering. Unfortunately, this is the cost, if I'm understanding correctly. So again, I'm for the project, I think is worthy, and unfortunately, the cost is high. I think it used to be, if I'm understanding correctly, there's environmental work that used to be, uh, um, an old, uh, gas station, gas, gas tanks and all that type of stuff. It's an interesting conversation about what needs to happen there to level that land and everything, so, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Uh, Commissioner Wynn, I've got your light on next.
Follow-up comment, that this is not just a thank you to the Urban Development Authority, it's a county-backed financing bond by the city, so that if it happened to fail for any reason, then the city would be responsible for the money. And, um, I'm not sure where and who voted on the Willie Hill Annex Building proceeds to be used for this. I, I don't, I may not have been here when that was voted on, but I don't know how we can just say that money's gonna be spent for that. That is city property, and that's city money being used for this project. And to back up what Commissioner Watkins said, I just want to know what the nine hundred thousand dollars is gonna be used for, close to a million dollars is gonna be used for. Just, just give us a plan, to show us what you're gonna use it for. Besides the very, um, large-scale rendition we saw earlier with the fountains and the statues and things like that, what is it gonna be spent for? What, what is nine hundred thousand dollars gonna go for? That's what I want to know.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Commissioner Slesinger, got your light on next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we just have to keep in mind that, um, when the Poplar Street project and the Rosa Parks Park project were initially approved, the intent of this commission was to immediately attend to Poplar Park because that was really the immediate, um, issue at the time. But we also said that we were going to, you know, spend money to make Rosa Parks the kind of place that the city would be, um, would be proud of. And, you know, we've sort of let that, um, go by the wayside, uh, a little bit. It's been a couple of years since Poplar Park was finished, and, um, Rosa Parks still remains in need. So, um, I'm just going back to our discussion. We said we were gonna do Poplar Park immediately. We weren't going to neglect work that needed to be done at Rosa Parks. The, we, we, we may have neglected it up to this point, but we have a mechanism by which to, uh, fund it, and we need to go ahead and, um, keep our word and fund Rosa Parks Square.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Slesinger. Got no other lights on, so I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor of the resolution, uh, raise your hand, please. Let me see the hands of the ayes. One, two, three, four, five, six, six, and those opposed, two. Six, six to two. Uh, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is our item, uh, uh, C, uh, which is a, a resolution to include certain registered roads as part of the county road system, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the acceptance of certain registered roads for public use as part of the county road system and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is item D, uh, which is a resolution to extend, uh, execute a memorandum of understanding with the Land Bank Authority. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Macon-Bibb County Land Bank Authority Incorporated for the acquisition of property related to the blight remediation projects using two thousand and eighteen SPOS funds in substantially the same form as attached here too, as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is a, a resolution, uh, to retain the services of, uh, an engineering firm for a streetscape improvement along a portion of Persley Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Ingram and Associates Consulting Engineers LLC in furtherance of certain improvements to Persley Street with the cost of fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars due pay from SPOS bond revenues and our SPOS bond proceeds, calendar year two thousand and nineteen, blight remediation, and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval as amended. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, of the resolution signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the, uh, resolution as amended is adopted. Uh, next is a, a resolution to amend our Title VII compliance policy, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission, excuse me, amending the Title VII compliance policy and plan, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a companion resolution to amend Title VI compliance policy. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission amending the Title VI compliance policy and plan, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, item H was tabled in pre-commission and will not be discussed or voted on tonight, so we'll move on to item I. Uh, item I is an ordinance to appropriate monies, uh, for the Central City Commons Project, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to one million, sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars from SPOS bond revenues and our SPOS bond proceeds, calendar year two thousand and nineteen, roads and bridges, Central City Commons line item to provide funding for improvements to the Central City Commons Project and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins?
And not to be too petty, but just remind me, what is, the, the one-point million, what are we doing with this? This is the stormwater?
Stormwater work that, that we agreed to do so that they could build a new hotel like we're looking at. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Item J is a, uh, an ordinance to appropriate SPOS funds for improvement at the John Drew Smith Tennis Center. Uh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by, uh, Commissioner Wynn?
Mayor, um, since these next four resolutions, ordinances, or resolution are all related to the tennis courts and such, can we just vote it, it all together in bulk? I don't know what you want to call that, but all together, vote for J, K, L, M?
Is there objection to doing that? To, to read, read all four and vote once? Or does anybody want to vote on, ma'am?
Well, we've talked about it.
Thank you. Is, is there objection to reading these four and voting at the conclusion of the reading of all four? Without objection, then, uh, we'll, we'll read, we'll read item J, uh, and then move on?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to seventy-five thousand dollars from SPOS bond revenues and our SPOS bond proceeds, calendar year two thousand and nineteen, Parks and Recreation, John Drew Smith Tennis Center line item to provide funding for new LED lighting and the resurfacing of the tennis courts, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. There, we'll go on to item K.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Signature Tennis Courts Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and two thousand for resurfacing and repair services at the John Drew Smith and Tatnall Square Tennis Centers to be paid by SPOS bond proceeds and our SPOS revenues, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. There, we'll go on and read item, item L.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for services related to the installation of the Musco Lighting Equipment at the John Drew Smith Tennis Center to be paid by SPOS bond proceeds and our SPOS revenues, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval of that, and we'll go on and read item M.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of four hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars thousand five hundred dollars for lighting to be installed at John Drew Smith Tennis Center to be paid by SPOSS bond proceeds and our SPOSS revenues and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval there as well. Is there further discussion on any of these four items? Commissioner Vivins, I've got your light on, sir.
Not much of a discussion, but I was, I was sitting here right quick trying to come up with an approximate cost of doing this, all of these that, okay. But anyway, I just, I'm going to vote for it, but I just wanted to mention the cost.
Thank, thank you. Commissioner Watkins, got your light on, sir?
Just kind of answering Commissioner Vivins' question there. As a total, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of lighting and, and resurfacing, which I agree is badly needed. It's been more than a decade since we've done it. And it just kind of highlights the way that government projects and these things can add up really quickly because I do believe that for Musco and our procurement process, we are getting them at the best price you can get them. It's just amazing to see. But, yeah, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of lighting. Hopefully, they last.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Jones, got your light on, sir?
Just, on, on the, on the lighting too, I might mention, and Clay tells me we're going to, this kind of lighting on all the facilities. But Musco guarantees these lights for 25 years. So if they go out or go bad, they're going to replace them. That's built into the cost. So that's a nice feature to know, 25 years, we're covered. And their new LED type lighting and they'll be better than what we've ever had. Hi, Yul, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, no, no other lights on. I assume, I assume you're ready to vote. Okay, those in, those in favor of item J, the ordinance, item K, the resolution, item L, the resolution, and item M, all applying to the John Drew Smith and/or Tatnall Tennis Center signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and those four, an ordinance and three resolutions are adopted. That takes us then to item N, which is an amendment to the timeline for expenditure to us out of the SPOSS funds. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the Twenty-Third Amendment to the 2018 SPOSS project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOSS project manager and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item O. And item O is a resolution to resurface or to retain the services of surface masters to resurface a parking lot at the Bloomfield Gilead Center. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Surface Masters Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for resurfacing, repair, and restriping services of the Bloomfield Gilead Recreation Center Parking Lot to be paid by SPOSS bond proceeds and our SPOSS revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item P, which is a, a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding for some emergency management grant, system appliances. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between Macon Bibb County Emergency Management Agency and the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency, providing for the application and profile record in the Georgia EM Grants Pro System as part of the application for the Emergency Management Performance Grant and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an item that we are adding to old business. It was previously on your agenda as new business. So if you're, if you're looking for it, it was item G under new business, but the county attorney informs us that it really should have been old business. And so we're moving it up as item Q. And I'll ask the clerk to, to read the resolution by caption, please.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to reject all bids received in response to request for proposal number twenty dash zero zero one dash CW regarding the operation of the vehicle maintenance parts shop and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted to reject all bids. That now brings us to the new business items. And there are several items of new business that have been prepared and sent down to us. And I'm going to refer them to committees for further study and evaluation beginning next Tuesday, the 26th, at nine o'clock in the committee meeting room immediately behind us. So let me read the new business that we have already. First is a resolution to reappoint Tim Jones to the Macon Bibb County Planning and Zoning Commission for an additional term. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Next is a resolution reappointing Sylvia McGee and our own Commissioner Bert Vivins to another term on the county land bank authority. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item C under new business is a resolution to appoint Judge Sarah Harris to the Region Two Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item D is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY19 budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of seven thousand six hundred dollars from the Bibb County Tax Commissioner's Office, salaries and wages full-time line item to contract label contractual services line item for the purpose of hiring a temporary contract employee. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. And my first request, let me be sure it's the FY19 or is it FY20? It may be a typo. It may be need to be the FY20 budget. They may need an amendment. But I'm going to refer it to you to find out. Next is item E. It's a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to provide a hundred thousand dollars to Clisbee Housing Associates Limited Partnership upon receipt of an allocation of low-income housing tax credits from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the Clisbee Tower Building. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Next is a similar resolution to provide four hundred thousand dollars to Vinival Housing Associates Limited Partnership upon receipt of an allocation of low-income housing tax credits from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the Vinival Christian Tower Building. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. I try, I try. Item H is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a Georgia Smart Communities Challenge Grant from the Georgia Institute of Technology in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, requiring a local match of ten thousand dollars cash plus forty thousand dollars of in-kind services to be used by the Bibb County Information Technology Department to fund the smart neighborhoods Macon Bibb County program. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY20 budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of ten thousand dollars from the IT Budget Software License and Maintenance Line Item to the Grants Fund Transfer Out Line Item to fund the cash portion of the local match required for the Georgia Smart Communities Challenge Grant. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is item J, an ordinance to amend the coroner's organizational chart and to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of up to seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars in benefits from the general fund balance in the FY2020 budget to fund the conversion of one part-time deputy coroner position to one full-time deputy coroner position. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. And finally, item K is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of forty-one thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund balance to contractual services funds and repair and maintenance outside contract funds in the FY20 budget to account for maintenance of the Sandy Beach Water Park algae removal and repair to vehicle. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. That's all of the new business that we have received thus far, but I would encourage you to check the agenda that's published on Friday afternoon to see if any additional items come down from the county attorney's office and, and have been referred to the committees for further study and evaluation at their meetings beginning nine o'clock AM next Tuesday, the 26th. That now brings us to the end of, oh, new business, brings us now to public comments on non-agenda items. And we have our good friend Donald Richardson, who signed up and wants to give us some grassroots reflection. Mr. Richardson, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir. And good to see you doing so well.
The book of Zechariah, chapter 12. "The burden of the words of the Lord for Israel saith the Lord, which stretches forth the heavens and layeth the foundation of the earth, and formeth the spirit of man within him. Behold, I will make Jerusalem a cup of trembling unto all the people roundabout, when they shall be in the siege both against Judah and against Jerusalem. And in that day, I will make Jerusalem a burdensome stone for all people, all that burden themselves, which it shall be cut in pieces, though all the people of the earth be gathered together against it. In that day saith the Lord, I will smite every horse with astonishment, and its rider with madness; and I will open mine eyes upon the house of Judah, and will smite every horse of the people with blindness. And the governors of Judah shall say in their heart, 'The inhabitants of Jerusalem shall be my strength and the Lord host their guard.' In that day, I will make the governors of Judah like an heath of fire among the wood, and like a torch of fire in a sheath; and they shall devour all the people roundabout on the right hand and on the left. And Jerusalem shall be inhabited again in her own place, even in Jerusalem. The Lord also shall save the tents of Judah first, that the glory of the house of David and the glory of the inhabitants of Jerusalem do not magnify themselves against Judah. In that day shall the Lord defend the inhabitants of Jerusalem; and he that is feeble among them at that day shall be as David; and the house of David shall be as God, as the angel to Lord before them. And it shall come to pass in that day, that I will seek to destroy all the nations that come against Jerusalem; and I will pour upon the house of David and upon the inhabitants of Jerusalem the spirit of grace and of supplications; and they shall look upon me whom they have pierced; and they shall mourn for him as one mourneth for his only son, and shall be in bitterness for him as one that is in bitterness for his firstborn. In that day shall there be a great mourning in Jerusalem, as the mourning of her dad rimmens in the valley of Megiddo. And the land shall mourn, every family apart, the family of the house of David apart, and their wives apart, the family of the house of Nathan apart, and their wives apart, the family of the house of Levi apart, and their wives apart, the family of Shemuel apart, and their wives apart. All the families that remain, everyone, every family apart, and their wives apart."
Mr. Richardson, thank you very much for sharing those grassroots reflections. It's always good to see you and to hear your, hear your comments. That's all the people that signed up. And we've no points of personal privilege requested. Can I get a motion to adjourn? You got a motion to adjourn and without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.